Hey, recording has started.
Thank you, Amanda. Alright, so I would like to call this meeting to order on, oh my goodness, May 19th at 7:07 PM. This meeting of the, this regular meeting of the Buffalo Inland Wetlands Commission. Sorry, that was a disaster. Alright, with that, um, I also do not have our, yes, I do. Do I? Do not have our, nope, I don't have that.
Do you want the agenda?
No, I have the agenda. I was going to read the, how did I have it? The, um, electronics policy. I took everything out of my thing. Please don't use your electronics during the meeting.
No, just say that if we argue with them, that they're only for the purposes of the meeting and the purpose of the, of the commission, which I will be using my device. It will only be for the purposes of this meeting.
Right, so I was going to say, please don't use your devices for personal reasons during the course of the meeting. You can only use them if you are going to be using them for official meeting business and let us know what you're doing in the course of the meeting also, so we can comment on that. Alright, that was not the official verbiage that I'm going with.
Oh.
Okay, uh, let's see, um, no one to seat.
Why don't we introduce ourselves?
Yes, that sounds like a great idea.
Kevin, you want to go? Introductions? Oh, muted.
You are muted.
Kevin Seaman, Commissioner.
Nicholas Jordan, Commissioner Vice Chair.
Danielle Monroe, Chair.
Dave McCollum, Inland Wetlands Agent.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, um, Dave, do we have any amendments to the agenda or any other items tonight?
Uh, thank you for asking, as always, Madam Chair. I, I would ask the Commission, make one, um, small amendment to the agenda under staff reports, um, discussions, uh, regarding a presentation, a potential presentation by the Northwest Conservation District.
If you'd like to add that item?
Correct.
Alright, uh, do I hear a motion to amend the agenda to include a discussion of the northeast?
West.
Northwest?
Conservation District.
Conservation Commission?
District.
District, that was, I'm, I'm just gonna be a disaster tonight.
That's, that's fine, it's okay, so, so move.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, let's take a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, we can add that to the agenda. Northwest, why would it be northwest instead of northeast?
Northwestern Connecticut.
Northwestern Connecticut, thank you. Is that what it is? Thank you, okay. Brain in a million different places this evening. Alright, so, that leaves us to new business.
Correct.
Okay, so, 41 Dodging Town Road, permitted use as of right, repair existing wall footings. I don't see anyone here to present tonight.
I, and, and for good reason, Madam Chair, uh, this is a matter that has been previously broached to, uh, the Commission by the property owner Bruce Pierce. He and a gentleman that were presenting to this Commission, I believe during either their February or March meetings, have prepared, uh, the application that this Commission steered them towards submitting to staff. Um, I can give you, I think I've got copies of plans that they gave.
Did this sound like Google Drive, Dave?
Yes, it is.
That's what I thought, okay, yep, gimme, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Thank you.
This is cool.
If you guys want to take a minute to look over that, and then you can ask me questions. Ah, yes, this is my stuff.
Thank you for providing that.
You're welcome.
This is cool.
So, so the gentleman who is working with, uh, with Mr. Pierce, uh, this is not his first rodeo, as he, uh, stated before this Commission when he was here discussing this with Mr. Pierce, the gentleman's name escapes me, maybe?
Mr. Roberts, Alex.
Alex Roberts, thank you. Uh, as, as Mr. Roberts was saying, uh, when he was discussing this matter before the board, um, he has done these kinds of projects before on differing levels of scale. Um, I would trust that he would follow these plans as he's the one that's prepared them and, uh, would be receptive to any input that I would weigh on what he, uh, is proposing to do here. It would not be anything beyond repairing the existing walls that are out there. That's the direction that this Commission gave, uh, uh, or that, that's, that was, um, the intent that the Commission was willing to work with, uh, for, uh, Mr. Pierce and Mr. Roberts to use, uh, the permitted use as of right, um, review process. So, if, if there's anything that, that, uh, comes out of what they're looking to do that is more than that, I would redirect them to this board and then we would either have more discussions or they would submit another more substantive application as appropriate. Do you guys have any questions?
I do not.
No, that, very cool, very well done.
I was just wondering if we could, um, put, uh, Mr. Roberts, Alex, in touch with Mr. Bjorken from Southern Rock, who just give us one of these, because I so wish that this is just basically all we need. I think this is essentially all we need for something like this, for a permitted use as a right project like this.
I, I would have-
Nice drawing with stating how it's gonna be done in a little kit taking-
We should probably keep this discussion to this.
Oh, absolutely, but it would just be cool.
And, and furthermore, I, I wouldn't want to discuss the circumstance for, for that application in particular, just because it is on appeal. Um, and I, and I wouldn't want to go into any area that we shouldn't be without advice from counsel.
Yeah, that was still aside, um, sorry.
Sure, sure.
It just seems like the right direction for a project.
It, it does, is there any information that isn't on here that you would like to be added?
Uncomfortable with it as it stands, it looks like it did.
So, I just had a question, I guess, do we know, like, does the, underneath the existing stone wall?
Mm-hmm.
I wish we had the pictures here, you know, do we have?
Yeah, do you want to bring them up?
Is there any way we have any, a couple of those photos of this site, yeah?
Yeah, I can bring them up. I have, they're on, they should be on the Google Drive.
Yeah, I think they're on the drive, I got, I, I wouldn't know where to find them.
I will find them.
Um, I guess I'm just wondering, yeah, how so it eroded, how are, they're gonna, are they gonna connect to the, to the, uh, bedrock underneath?
So-
Somehow, and I'm just wondering how that-
So that, so that's part of the issue, right, is that, is that where the walls are eroding, they are eroding because there is no rock.
There was still some dirt above the rock and that dirt all washed away.
Correct, correct.
So now that the rock is visible, it's like, but, you know, something underwater sometimes.
Right, but the, the way, the way I would read, well, let me, I'm sorry. Before we go down this, this conversation, I, I should bring up the photo for you guys.
It was more just a question of, of Alex's construction.
Okay, this is, this is the shot you guys want. Now I just gotta figure out how to bring it up on the screen. There we go.
I mean, the photographs-
There's no bedrock showing in this picture, right, in his drawing?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm familiar with that photo.
Yeah.
So let me, I don't want to speak on a turn. I wanna take this from what Mr. Roberts provided. So he has, it's a sequence for it to be completed at lowest water level time, work areas to be pumped recently dry, repairs to existing wall only, work to make reasonable consideration for existing water plants and animals, rebar reinforced cage where needed and possible, rapid concrete mixed, any machine entrant water, determine when work should take place, constantly changing weather events, best management practices, okay, low level watermark, case rebar repair area, 40 marshalls scoured or charred. So, so I-
Low level watermark.
So, and so I, I would read the, the detail of the wall notes to suggest that they're not going to be excavating, or if, if they're going to be excavating, it's, it's, it's only going to be, to have the, uh, the base of the, uh, repair work match the low level mark of where water travels through the bed in the water course. Uh, because if, if, if they were going to be doing any substantive excavation, that would not be covered under our permitted use as of right. We discussed the language for what can be done for that process, and it does not explicitly states about not allowing for excavation or fill. Okay, so that's, so that's, I think, why they're averse to using that term explicitly in this plan, and, and I would agree with them. If, if, if the, um, conditions warrants having to change how the wall is repaired or constructed, I would advise them, like I said, to revise what they're looking to do and come back before you, just to make sure that you have, uh, they give, or you give them the okay. But I'm just gonna work off of what they're saying here on this. Uh, and, and I don't see, for how they're proposing to do this, I don't see how they wouldn't be able to achieve what they're looking to do.
Did you ever read for how high the water line was in these photos?
Um, that's a good question.
Like, is that?
So, so the channel depth varies. If, if you look in the, if you look in the background, the water where my cursor is, it's very small, um, but the, but the depth of the water where the cursor is, is much deeper than where it is here in the foreground, okay? So, that, this could vary.
I just meant, I, I didn't, I didn't phrase that very clearly.
Yeah.
I was trying to see if I can get a, a visual understanding of, they're going to try to do this at the low watermark.
Correct.
How does that compare to the low watermark? And you may not know the answer to that.
I, I, I would say the, the, the water that's, the level of the water that's being shown here could very well be comparable, just because at the time that this photo was taken, I believe, we were still in the middle of drought.
Okay.
In that, you know, we had gotten very little rain during the fall, and comfortably we had very little accumulated snowfall during the winter. I mean, we may have had some rain, but I don't think it came before this shot.
I'm just looking at it and noting that there is water underneath that area that they're going to be putting concrete in, and I, I read it, it says they're gonna pump and divert.
Yes, as they should.
Yeah, for sure, okay.
And they're, are they gonna, like, drill into the bedrock to secure the rebar and then pour the concrete, basically, like, in that whole cavity under there? Are they gonna fill that cavity, right?
The, 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 um, the deep, the detail for the wall notes appears to indicate that, yes.
So that's all just gonna get filled, they're gonna drain the water, it's gonna be bedrock exposed, they're gonna drill into the bedrock with the rebar, I guess, because I see a little-
There may not be bedrock exposed.
But, but they're, but they're going to drill rebar into the ground, regardless of what's there, so, so that the concrete has something-
Well, they're gonna go into the rock or else it's gonna happen again. They're gonna go to the rock.
I, I don't know how far down they would go, I, I guess-
The rock is all exposed. It all got washed away. It's all bedrock now. We, we saw it, we saw it, I saw it.
For, for, for certain parts of this, that may be correct. I, like, I, on the right-hand side, uh, or on the right, uh, retaining wall, from the perspective of this photo-
Anything loose got washed out.
I, I would agree with you. This, this whole area over here, this is all rock, absolutely. But that may not be the same as what's over here.
Okay.
So, and, and, and remember-
But it didn't-
This is, this is just a repair, right? If, if they were looking to do this, you know, and, and have it be, uh-
Start it over and do it as it should probably have been done in the first place.
Perhaps.
But they were, there was dirt under there presumably?
Yes, correct.
And that all washed away, well.
So, what, what they're, I'm sorry?
It could be good, I was just wondering how how the construction works.
If, if there's, um, for whenever this work starts, I would give you guys feedback on its progress, and I would welcome any questions that you guys would have during the process.
Great.
Uh, but what, what the, what Mr. Roberts and Mr. Pierce have been looking from you, uh, uh, tonight is for you to vote on this, to essentially give it the okay, you know, considering the discussion that they had, however many meetings ago that was, and, and this plan that's before you tonight.
Yes.
So do we have further, I'm sorry, Kevin, you are now small on the screen because we have a big picture.
Oh, I'll share that.
Um, do, Kevin, do you have any further discussion points that you would like to bring to the table before we vote on?
Absolutely not. I actually thought that this was, I thought that part and process of our, uh, our approval for use of right indicated already that they were able to pursue this through Dave, like, so, uh, Dave actually thought that this had already been started, to be honest, so, nothing additional from me.
So, it, it was, um, we, we were, we were kind of putting the cart before the horse with, with the discussions that we had, but, but it was only just because, um, I, I wouldn't have wanted the applicant to go through the work of having this plan prepared if the Commission felt that something more substantive was needed. So, this is, this is essentially the formality that goes with all the discussions that has been had in prior meetings.
I, I'd like for everybody to remember that I also cannot vote on this due to personal interest.
Oh.
No.
So, I, I thought that this had already been handled, to be completely honest.
Your excuse for this? Uh-oh.
Great.
Wait, why can't?
Wait, here, do you want me, I'm gonna go, I can call Pat real quick and see if he can pop on.
Okay.
Okay.
It, it doesn't hurt to try.
Sure.
Do we, do we want to call for recess while he does that?
Yes. Do I need a motion for that?
Yes, you do.
So-
Motion to-
Motion to adjourn for a five-minute recess? Okay, seconded?
7:25.
Okay, do we, vote, Kevin, do you?
I, sorry, whatever, I'll raise my hand, raising my hand.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Alright, uh, we are back from recess, and I would like to ask someone to make a motion.
At what time?
We are out, we are back at 7:31, thank you, Kevin. Dave.
That's okay.
Picky Dave.
That's okay.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion to, to table our discussion of 41 Dodging Town Road until, what do we say, after we discuss 13 Redwood Drive?
Sure.
To, to move it further in, down the agenda?
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second? Kevin, you are muted.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I keep myself on-
Don't worry, don't worry, any discussion? No, we're good, any discussion?
Nope.
Let's take a vote, Kevin?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, so we are gonna table that discussion and move on to 13 Redwood Drive.
Right. So, without speaking, uh, uh, on behalf of the applicant, I will give you a brief summary of what this application entails.
Do we, did we expect the applicant, excuse me?
Um, no. All the materials that are before you are on the Google Drive. Give you one of these, I'll give you one of these. I just ask that any copies I distribute to you this evening, you return back. So try not to get them confused with anything else. We also have, if you guys want to take a look at the stormwater management reports, we have those, and we also have copies of the site plan.
It's unusual for you to ask for them back, why do you need them back tonight?
Um, because the versions that I'm giving you may not be in the box at the final.
Thank you. I am uncoordinated, I was on the phone, I'll probably repeat them two hours ago.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm following along the site plan on the Google Drive.
You just pull that open for both of us to share, since we have-
Kevin, do you have access to these on the computer?
He said he was following along on the drive.
Me, yeah, I'm, but, yes, yes, sorry, yes, I'm following along with these on the Google Drive, everything's, I have clear access to everything.
I just wanna make sure. So take a few minutes to review these and let me, uh, let me know when you're ready to spend.
I am good, they are fresh in my mind. So gentlemen, when you are ready, can you please speak up and let us know that you are ready?
I will do so.
Thank you, Kevin.
Sorry about that.
Wow.
Hey.
Hello, good sir.
I'm sorry?
We've moved on to a different agenda item, and before we, can I, wait, shall I? I wanna see.
Oh, you could change them right now?
Right now, in front of this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make a, um, a motion?
No.
No, I'm, uh, Amanda, I would like to seat Pat tonight, please, for, um, Laura Ferguson. Okay, thank you.
Apologize, Emily.
You're good, thank you for coming.
And that's 7:34, Amanda.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
We are currently working on a new application, which is 13 Redwood Drive.
Okay.
You can look it, yep.
Thank you.
And everyone is just getting themselves up to speed on it, and then we are going to open a discussion on it, and then we will-
Great.
Thank you. I will look into these again. I'll revisit that one, I'm fully moved in.
There you go.
Wait, I'm sorry, where is Redwood Drive?
That is opposite of the, uh, shopping complex for Big Y, and, uh, I'm sorry?
Is the road perpendicular right off this line here?
That's correct.
Maps all over the room, can you point it out?
Yes.
I think I'm good when you guys are, uh, if questions arise, it'll happen as we talk about it, but I'm-
Kevin?
Here's, here's, down here at Tomoff, here's Stony Hill Road, here's the Big Y, here's Redwood Drive.
It's literally right across.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
And then through the woods there, there's a big condo complex on the Newtown side, or?
Uh, good question, I'm not as familiar with the Newtown side.
Something in the woods there, yeah.
That sounds, that does sound right.
So Kevin's ready to discuss, are you ready?
Oh, the condo complex that you're talking about is further down the hill, I know who you're talking about.
Maybe somewhere down the hill.
Yes, I know where you're talking about.
You can pick it up off, I think there's a cliff, it's a cool, uh-
Yep.
Area, it's like a natural, it's about border between Newtown and Bubbalis.
All that?
By that gully. I think it looks like-
No.
Why, this is the time.
You're good.
It seems to run.
You got it.
I think we're all ready to discuss data, to make that decision for us.
Okay. Um, so as I was saying, and I'll be brief, because I don't want to present this on the behalf of the applicant, excuse me, uh, there is a, uh, the proposal entails, uh, single family dwelling, uh, they are showing a septic system, but, uh, they have to decide whether or not they actually want to go through with the septic system, or if, uh, oh, no, wait, excuse me, I'm sorry.
They changed to a sewer tie-in.
No, yes, I'm sorry, this is the stormwater management system, forgive me, uh, this is why it's better for the applicant to do this, not me. So, this is the stormwater management system, this is, uh, a template for the location of a future in-ground pool, I believe, I don't know if it would be part of this application, um, but your regulated resources on the property, there's an intermittent water course that channels to the south that runs, uh, in this direction, and then there's a flagged area of wetlands that does go, a, a small section of this goes onto an abutment property, I don't have the address, uh, off the top of my head, um, but if you're looking at the areas, it may take into consideration, uh, this small offsite portion. Uh, your regulated area extends out to here, so it's this whole swath of property, so pretty much all the activities except for the driveway would be under this Commission's purview, along with some-
Since they're noting a future pool, do we take that into account while reviewing this?
That's, that's, that's a question that, um, I would ask, and you can ask the applicant when they're discussing this, because they may want to have this be part of it, they may not.
Okay.
Is it the approximate edge of the lawn now?
Uh, what they're showing here is this dash line, that's correct.
So, what is currently on this property, or do we want to save these discussions for when the applicant is here to truly present?
So, so, um, there is a rear lot, uh, that is behind this property, and that might be why, um, because there's a driveway that goes through this area here.
Looks like it's partially on and partially off the property, yeah?
Right, right, because there's, uh, there's an easel that, that permits that. So, that might be why the lawn extends out, I don't know why it does that in this area here, uh, but that could certainly be discussed during the reviews, uh, review, review process.
And it's pretty flat, just going towards a wetland?
Um-
Probably about two feet.
So, we've, oh, you know what, I don't have-
I think it talks about that.
494 to 488.
Yeah, yeah.
You're looking at the contour. Yeah, the one on the coast of the street is 494 to Wetlands, it's, uh, 488 about, 484, so everything slants towards, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the highest point is closer towards the green.
Oh, this is where I was talking about, but it's not actually one of those sections, this was just included just because it was li-
So it looks like-
Yeah, that's the natural diversity database.
Looks like right now everything's draining into the wetlands from the property.
Yeah, so, so your stormwater management report, your drainage report, excuse me, uh, it's, Mr. Mizuko, the applicant's project engineer, usually flushes out the drainage maps.
Right.
Yeah, see, so he shows-
Well, this is just for, uh, accepting or not accepting, that's the nature right now?
Right. Um, I will note, the, the two, um, the two items that the applicant will need to revise at some point during this application process, the survey that was submitted, the footprint that's shown for the proposed structure does not match what's on here, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, that's, that's inconsequential, the, the idea is that, you know, they want to have a house with some kind of footprint on the property, so that would be flashed out, or flushed out as part of the process, the other thing is, uh, free schedule.
Motion to accept the application.
Well, we need to discuss probably, or, we discuss afterward. What, what we need to decide is whether we're gonna, uh, accept it, um, for public-
Yeah, public hearing, interview, like-
Right.
I agree, I, I'm listening to everything you guys are saying, it seems like most of these questions are questions that would come up during discussion.
So tonight we have to decide whether we are going to accept the application for review through in-house or public comment, which is not the right words, but my brain is nodding.
So, so site plan review or public hearing?
Public hearing.
Uh, you guys have your parameters, uh, for, uh, for, uh, why an application will be accepted as a public hearing and your rights, um, you can go by significant impact, public interest, or, uh, position of 25 persons, I believe, standard.
I don't think there's any of that here, it doesn't look like there.
Yeah, I mean, based on the nature of it, I would, I would say site plan- Yeah, I mean, based on the nature of it, I would I would say site plan review.
Has there been any inquiry about this project?
There there was one residence, uh one neighbor that was uh curious about. When uh this property would be developed.
Just when, not how, and not nothing.
They, I mean, they they did. They they didn't know that there were wetlands on this property and I and I had advised them. As I had advised anyone that was looking at this project's buy, its current. That they would likely have to go before the wetlands commission, you know, to get a fluid to construct.
So one resident of Bethel, was it a budding property?
Correct.
So one abutter came with questions about the development of it.
Correct.
And what is the? Is it twenty-five?
Twenty-five signatures, correct.
Twenty-five signatures.
And that has to be within fourteen days of this commission's receipt, which would be tonight.
So we do not have that.
No, no, no. So so fourteen days after receipt. So so this application just came to us. Uh, that would have been ten days ago.
So once we accept it, if we accept as a site panel and there's a public outright, there's a signature for twenty-five signatures, we.
Then it becomes a public.
Oh, so we can change.
Then it becomes a public hearing.
They they the public.
They force it to.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying. I have not had that experience yet. Okay.
Hopefully.
I'd like to sample all the things eventually. Okay. So.
There's a motion of a war relief.
An incomplete motion. You were making a motion or Kevin was making?
Are we? Well, I've attracted it for discussion.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Um, okay, I would make a motion that we accept this application for T Redwood Drive uh via site plan review process. Uh, hopefully it's like work.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Not here.
All right, hearing that, I will call a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Nico?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The application for thirteen Redwood Drive was accepted for site plan review.
And uh two questions, uh both formalities. I'm assuming you would want uh the uh the department's engineering consultant, SLR. To be the engineer of record for Tom to review the applications, please.
Yes, please.
And would you guys want to schedule a sidewalk?
Yes, please.
Okay, what would you like uh to have flagged or staked?
Well, the.
So the wetlands will already be flagged.
They already are.
Yes.
Where the stormwater management system is gonna go.
Okay, you want the corners of the chambers?
And I guess the pool too.
Well, in in the instance, in the instance that the applicant actually wants to go forth with the pool, because they may not want to do that.
My only concern with a pool is that sometimes people drain their pool water from the pump. They do it all the time. But that's why I asked if we could consider the pool. Where does that go? You know, usually. We'll have to find out when.
So so I would hash out. So I would hash out with the applicant if they actually want the pools to be part of this application. They may just have this on here as a placeholder. For whenever they choose to go forward with this in the future. Uh, if they do want to go for the pool, I would ask that they would have the corner staked.
Yes.
The same for the stormwater chambers. Is there anything else? The corners of the state. Do we want all four corners or?
I'm fine with the closest to the wetland.
So just this, just this one corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say closest to wetland, just so we know, because it's gonna go downhill from there.
Is there anything else you want flagged?
Not from this guy.
I'm good, I'm good.
Would you consider more recommendation from staff?
Please.
You're gonna want to know where this is.
Oh, right. I forgot that's hiding there. Yeah, that's the outlets, the outlet control structure that actually feeds into the wetland. So that's the most important. Thank you. That'll be good.
I thought you might appreciate that. So to be clear.
And if they're going to do a septic, can we get that location flagged? And if they're going to pursue them?
So so this plan does not appear to show that they want to septic. It it's showing a newer connection to the stream. If that does change, and then then they would have to present this commission with a.
Yeah. Because that would be a game changer uh for sure, based on location and.
I think you did.
Um, I don't know what the hell.
Originally, it was originally reading through this.
Right.
One of the many tones, it said that they it was originally considered as a septic, but that they had changed.
Yeah.
Period of time.
Yeah, why? When are you? Yeah.
It became available. It wasn't an available option.
Exactly. Couple of years.
And and even if uh a certain street or a property can't be serviced by sewer, I don't think that's the fault that you have to go to the store.
Well, so.
But but that's but that's just my understanding. I I defer to the experts that speak on this.
Yep.
Um, when do we want? When does the commission want to schedule the sidewalk?
I'm going to take out my phone to look at my calendar.
Okay. I I believe we're at the time of year where a weeknight sidewalk would be uh.
Doable.
Wouldn't doable.
Tuesday.
I would probably say a Tuesday or Thursday night would be best for me. Almost every one of my weekends is tied up until holy shit, July.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are the two nights out of the week that I absolutely should not do.
Exact opposite thing at the exact same time.
Well, actually, I might be able to find a Thursday. That's that's.
I could do a Thursday as well, with the understanding that it would not likely be until after six thirty.
If if I have to swing it, I could swing a Wednesday. If I know ahead of time, I could probably swing a Wednesday. Mondays are very tough, though, like. Like Monday, well, let me rephrase that. Mondays are tough before seven-ish.
Um, so I I I can do Wednesday. I can find a Thursday. Every every other Thursday I can make available. So it depends on which one week next. What are your concerns, Pat?
I'm fine right now. I haven't figured out how to use a calendar yet. No, I I literally, I don't have Outlook anymore. I don't have a calendar. I my daughter's trying to teach me how to use this one on my phone and I can't. I have no idea.
Pat has a lot of time on his hands, ladies and gentlemen.
That's all I know.
Congratulations. Nico, do you have uh qualifications on when we can do this?
Um, no, no particular.
Okay. So today is the nineteenth.
Has to be two weeks out right now or ten days.
Uh, it doesn't have to be any certain days out.
Well, what about tomorrow? Yeah, I'm just saying.
Tomorrow or Wednesday would not work for me.
Okay.
Unfortunately. And and furthermore, if the commission wants these items to be. You would, you would need to give them time.
So looking at my calendar for next week.
I don't know if that would be enough time.
Okay, looking at. The week of June second.
I could do every day that week save uh Wednesday.
Um, yeah, so that doesn't work. So moving. Or I don't have to get tired of it, but I, no, I. Uh, Kevin can't do Mondays.
Yeah, Monday's your no-go for me.
Wednesday, the only day that week that you were available?
Yeah, I can make Wednesdays work. I can make Wednesdays work if I know well enough ahead of time.
Okay.
So.
What about Friday? Are the June sixth D-Day?
I can do Friday, June sixth. Kevin, how do you feel about Fridays?
Though they're tough because I do the family stuff and I have a lot of obligations on Friday. Depends on the Friday. You have to tell me the Friday. I can check my schedule.
Was looking at Friday, June sixth.
How about a Saturday morning?
Definitely not weekends. I'm away most weekends, all the way up till like June twenty-sixth.
Does Friday, June sixth work for you, Kevin, or is that a no?
I'm checking that right now. Give me a sec. I have two calendars I I have to manage.
Nice. You don't have to drag yourself up. Oh, Wednesday.
I, no, I I'm not thinking about the wedding. I'm thinking about on Fridays, we're off at noon.
I was just about to say that, David.
Okay, so Fridays are not a good day. Never mind.
Not I, it's not that it's not a good day. It's just that I would have to.
We don't hate you that much. We can, sorry. Make him, yeah, sure, no.
It just doesn't help.
I mean, I'd be more apt to do a long lunch on a Friday than than anything else, to be honest.
I can't do that. I can't be in.
I I know, I know, I know. That that it's it's a.
It's true.
It's not something I would have expected anybody else to be able to follow.
June tenth.
June tenth is a Tuesday.
Your wedding.
We have, we have P and Z uh June tenth.
Yeah, I can't do it Tuesday night anymore, but is that week, the week of the ninth?
No, the week of the ninth, I'm clear.
Okay.
Uh, Wednesday or Thursday, I could do that. I could do the eleventh or twelfth.
I can as well. I can do either of those days.
Lock it in.
Um, Kevin, what would you be free on those two days?
What time? After five P M.
So I'm not free until like six thirty on Wednesday?
That's easier for me.
Oh, no, five, yeah, six. I can be there at six on Wednesday.
Yeah, sure. So we have to check with the project engineer to see what they can do.
I will let them know. So so when I let them know what you're looking for them to have them have states, I would let them know the dates. And if and if for some reason that doesn't work, um, I would recommend you guys have a backup date. Just so that way I can brush up to them in case that one, their first day doesn't work.
So Kevin, you said six o'clock on or six thirty? What were you saying on Wednesday?
Either those are fine.
Six o'clock on Wednesday, eleven?
Done.
I think two after five would be four or five.
Six o'clock on Wednesday, the eleventh? Six o'clock on Wednesday, the eleventh?
Sold.
Okay, six o'clock on Wednesday, the eleventh. Thursday would be our backup times TBD.
Oh, for Thursday, yes.
Yes. Does that, you wanted a backup as well, yes?
Yes.
Kevin, what time could you do Thursday as a backup date if they can't do Wednesday?
Same timeframe. We just need to be after four P M.
Okay, I can, I can do uh five P M on that night.
Six thirty is the earliest for me on Thursday. I don't get out here until six.
Okay, so then six thirty is the earliest. So then six thirty on Thursday. Good.
As a backup date, yeah.
Okay, so as a backup date. Okay, do we need a motion for that? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to schedule, to request, to schedule, to schedule our sidewalk. Uh, for thirteen Redwood Drive for Wednesday, June eleventh at six P M.
And you're gonna want to make sure you know what you want staked.
Oh, with a backup of Thursday, June twelve at six.
Thirty.
Thirty. With the request that we have. Staked. The two corners of the house that are closest to the wetlands. The pool, if it is to be included on the final project.
Four corners.
The four corners of the water detention, water water management. What is that called again?
It's an outlet control structure.
Yeah, like control structure. Did we want anything else?
Or splash pad. To wetlands.
The wetlands are already staked. Anything that we discussed?
Nope, you got it all.
So I would entertain a motion for all those things that I just said. Who wants? Thank you, Pat. Do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, returning to our discussion of forty-one Dodging Town, which was opened in your absence to bring you up to speed quickly. We were provided with a detailed drawing. This is the. Forty-one Dodging Town where the terrible storms that we had during the summer washed out.
Yes.
Could we like to take a moment to review this? This is.
This is what we had in front of us.
Yep, it is. So we just have to vote on whether or not we're going to approve this plan. And if you have any questions, we can discuss. Kevin has to recuse himself, so we need three members who can speak to this.
Yeah, who drew up the plan?
Who was here presenting to us that night, or one of those nights when we were discussing, he's worked on projects at this scope before, and larger scope before. Do you recall him being here?
Oh.
I know what kind of eight and nine. Proper owner will determine when work is to take place and who's who is sole contractor's assistance will be. No, no formals given provided due to constantly changing weather events. So he's basically calling the town that's. Can do what he wants.
He's gonna try to do it at the lowest watermark. To have the least.
So I I I would make a point to. Have either Mr. Pierce or Mr. Roberts time of the day that they're going to do work. So that if in the instance I would like to inspect, I can make myself available.
Who's the engineer that came, gave the letter?
Uh, that was Benjamin Dodo.
That letter included with this?
Yes.
What did that letter stipulate? I I'm just having a fun to do drawings. I mean. You don't like it? I thought it was pretty big.
Uh, a letter dated.
That's scary.
A letter dated February sixth, I will read aloud and I quote, Dear Bruce, uh, this is from Benjamin Dodo. Uh, at your request, I visited the site yesterday uh to review, uh, yesterday being February fifth. To review the condition of the subject's wall and your plan for interim repair. It is my opinion that the following sequence will adequately serve as a temporary repair onto the wall to replace. They have to divert north side of Brook with sandbags, sandbags and or a temporary pipe during a dry spell. Remove loose rubble and soil between base of the existing concrete footing and ledge slash solid ground. Form and pour concrete in void, remove concrete forms. Armor concrete repair with plus or minus two foot diameter boulders and or concrete blocks extending into inverted stream bed. And remove sandbags and diversion pipe. If dislodged or shifted due to heavy stream flow, the boulders and blocks you intend to use do not pose a risk of traveling. Plus or minus eleven hundred feet downstream onto neighborhood properties, they can easily be repositioned as slash if necessary.
So I don't see any of the comments on here. Does that? Cover this or does this cover that?
I'm, yeah.
They're connected.
Yeah.
But why isn't the engineer signing off on this?
Because this was, this was prepared by Mr. Roberts, not by Mr. Dodo. And I believe the commission had given Mr. Roberts license to prepare.
No, and I know, I know we're being very. Liberal, is is the word. I'm just. I'm thinking in the future, what's prevent someone else from coming in, bringing a drawing like this to. But he has to. Well, engineer stipulating that this and that will work together. I was just saying that I would have liked to have seen something, even something like this from the other back here on another application.
Well, so let me, let me put it to you this way. Uh, you guys, you guys can always craft. Um, a condition for Mr. Dodo to sign off on the word that's constructed.
Good with that. That that would make me. Better.
I I I think that would be a very reasonable.
I I think the applicant is very, people are doing it and knows what you're doing. Otherwise, I'd be like, uh-uh.
Yes.
You know, but I would love to have an engineer just say, yep, he's doing it correctly, because I'm not engineer. You know, I think this gentleman, I don't know who was made with Alex. he's doing it correctly, because I'm not engineer, you know, I think this gentleman, I don't know who it was named was Alex Roberts. He does it for a living, he says he knows that he's doing it all that, again, I like to have the engineer's sample. Say, yes. Take a look at it, yep, they're doing it correctly.
If, if the commission feels that that's appropriate, then you can certainly have.
Sorry, that's my, that's my opinion. No, I totally agree with that. I think this guy's got stuck between, I hate to.
Rock in a hard place?
Rock in a hard place, you know.
Rock in a wet place.
He, he literally is the, what I call the in the spin cycle.
Yep.
You know, no one's helping him to take ownership, and if it wasn't for that, I would never even look at this, but with the engineer signing off on it, I think he's okay to move forward, that's my opinion.
Kevin, did you have any additions or comments that you wanted to add?
No, not really, I, I see where it's reasonable for what, for what's Pat, for what Pat is asking, um, so I, I would impose an argument to that. Again, I, I won't be voting on it because I.
That's right, okay, sorry.
But at the same time, I, I.
Can participate in the discussion.
I see where you're coming from. But I think the proposal's very straightforward, I think it's, it's honestly like one of the easier things that's came across the desk, um. I'm sorry that you had to come in, Pat, um, but I appreciate you, uh, doing so for me.
Oh, no, absolutely, I'm, I'm glad you called me.
Sorry, I, I forgot, okay. So Kevin, out, further discussion from Nika.
Well, I, I think, I think Kevin's intent would be to abstain or to recuse himself, which you should.
Do you need to formally do that?
He, Mr. Stephen should stay up, which is what he intends to do.
Yeah, I, I intend on abstaining from the decision that we are looking to put forth.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, so hearing no further discussion, I believe what we need to do is have a motion on the table to approve this application as permitted rights, rights as of use with the condition that we have the engineer, Mr. Dodo sign off on the drawing.
I, I think you would be looking, if, if I may phrase.
Please.
The commission's request, I believe you would be looking for some kind of sign off or a letter of substantial completion from a project engineer, it doesn't necessarily have to be Mr. Dodo, but it still seems to have the most familiar awareness. Um, verify that the construction plans as drawn by Mr. Roberts were followed substantially.
And noted.
And, and that the, uh, construction was completed as designed.
I would also like the stipulation in there when the work is being done, that they reach out and gain approval to the.
Notify your office.
Notify your office for
Oh.
acknowledgement.
Right, so, so, so this, for, for the justice standpoint for me, I would be going out there to monitor the work on a regular basis.
No, and I agree, but you're a busy person and you may not drive down that street every day, so I would like them to say, hey, we're gonna start working on it now.
Oh, right, so that's.
They don't have to go every day, just like, hey.
Right, so, so, so that would be, that would be whether it's Mr. Roberts or Mr. Pierce, I would, I would tell them, I would say, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to give me specific dates, but give me a window so that way I can expect, I can know to expect your phone call.
Right.
So that way, if you're working, I can stop by.
Yep.
I have an idea of what you're doing out there and when, so I can just pop in and say, oh, you're good, and just continue and let you do your work.
So is that standard practice, or do we need, or do we need to add a condition to make sure that that?
If you guys want to add it as a condition.
I would like it added because of the comments listed as.
Sure.
For, uh, nine.
All right, so I would love to hear a motion to approve this project permitted rights, rights as of use with the two conditions that we just discussed, one being the notification of Dave called about work commencement and the other being the sign off by either Mr. Dodo or another structural engineer.
Professionals.
So made.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hey, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, Kevin.
Uh, I'd abstain.
Nika?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next up on our agenda are business items, we have our special meeting minutes. Twelve. Sorry, that was just, I thought it was Amanda.
It is not, no.
From five twelve. Everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion to approve the minutes from five twelve to file special meeting minutes.
As written.
As written.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, Kevin.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And next up, we have a discussion regarding changing our regular meeting scheduled for six twenty-three at the moment. No, yes, scheduled for six twenty-three to a different date to accommodate a wonderful, wonderful celebration.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sure. Um, if, if, if the commission would entertain rescheduling this, which thank you very much, um, I would recommend you reschedule for the week before, the sixteenth, which would be the following Monday after the commission's site walk at thirteen Redwood Drive.
I have no problem with that, I cannot fully commit to that date.
A good wedding as well.
To the, the nineteenth, yeah, I have to be free that week, but more likely I'd be here, but because so few are intended, intended, so I just wanna make note that.
So does anybody, I'm gonna pull out my phone again just to make sure that I don't think I have a conflict. Kevin, can you and Nika check your own personal calendar?
June sixteenth, June sixteenth, I'm okay with.
Yeah, it's fine.
Please give me a moment just to confirm.
The following week's a no-go for me.
Yeah, I have no, no conflict with that, so I would entertain a motion to move our regularly scheduled meeting from June twenty-third to June sixteenth.
My second, or motion made?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, Kevin.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And just as a point of clarification, that would be at seven P M in meeting.
All right, moving along to the staff report.
Okay, um, eight ten, which is about forty minutes behind where I wanted to be, so I'm gonna try to keep this brief. We did touch on this, uh, we touched, excuse me. We touched base on this at the last meeting, there we go, and, um, I don't have much in the, in the way of updates for you guys, um, but I do think it would be a disservice if I didn't give you more than what I get already given. Um, I don't like to discuss, oh, well, first off, uh, seven Rockwell Road, that's just a placeholder. Um, Mr., uh, excuse me, Attorney Andres, um, doesn't have any new news for me apart from, uh, he did note that, um, the counsel that represented Mr. Bjorken, uh, near Marcus, uh, his license has been suspended. Um, and I believe he has two more months to serve until his license can be reinstated, so in the instance that something happens between now and, uh, Mr., uh, uh, Marcus, Attorney Marcus being able to resume, uh, representing, um, uh, Mr. Bjorken in a legal capacity, uh, the attorney for Mr. Bjorken would be, oh, shoot, I had it written down somewhere, uh, Attorney Wilson Carroll, uh, from the same practice, Kona Wolf P C. Um, they still have a status conference scheduled with, uh, the Honorable Maximino Medina over in Denver Superior Court, scheduled for July eleventh, that doesn't change anything. Uh, the idea being that, um, uh, an application is submitted to this commission regarding everything that was requested to date uh, for that property as part of the previous discussions. Uh, if something comes up, uh, or something doesn't come up, um, I'm assuming Attorney Andres would make, uh, some other kind of status update before this board to let you know. Um, but that's a long way of saying no notice. Anyway, um, I don't like bothering this, uh, commission with an enforcer just because that's, this is the staff's day-to-day, uh, routine. Um, but I, I do think it is worth you guys knowing that when there are matters where people do work without permits that come up, I'm looking into them and, um, I, I'm doing my best to work with them, whether it's, whether it's informally or formally, I try to do the former first and be very casual about, um, broaching the matter of them doing work without permits just because some people are blissfully unaware, um, some people, uh, think they have an, uh, they have an understanding of what they're allowed to do, that doesn't necessarily uh, match with what they're supposed to do, uh. And if they're cooperative, I try to keep things informal. If not, then we go through notices of violation and requests to appear before this board, cease and desists, orders to correct, and if ever the town adopts a citation ordinance, we would implement that as well, um, but, uh, but right now all of the enforcing matters that are on, um, uh, this agenda are, oh dear. Locked out of my computer, excuse me. There we go, um, all the matters that are on this agenda right now, they're informal, um, I will say, uh, the most egregious of these, which is sixteen Oakland Heights, um, they have actually been, uh, very pleasant to work with, um.
I've looked at here, Paul, please.
Yes, okay, so, well, I'll, I'll, I'll go through them one by one, um. Let me just bring them up.
I've worked in that yard.
Uh, where, where you go, staff report, okay, so the first one I have on here is thirty-three Benedict Road, okay. Let me bring up a photograph. All right, what's a good panel, this is perfect, okay. So for thirty-three Benedict's Road, I had a neighbor to one of these properties, uh, I had one of the neighbors of this property called our office and advised that there was some tree work going on on this property, and they were concerned that the land was being cleared for another residential lot to build another house. And I said, and I had told them, you know, based on the configuration of the lots and their size, that that was highly unlikely, but I was still investigate to, uh, take a look at what was going on out there, just because we've been having drainage issues in this area stemming from the storm that we had all the way, uh, back in last August. When I went out there, most to my surprise, there were contractors working in an area that I, you know, had visibly identified as clearly being a wetland, um, uh, working to remove, uh, snags and other, uh, vegetation, uh, that was growing in the wetland area itself, so I had told them you need to stop, a, and, uh, if, if you're going to, uh, do any other work back here, you need to come and see my office to get, uh, the appropriate permit for that, uh, especially if you're going to be using machines, uh, and especially if you're going to be bringing in, uh, any more film material. Thankfully, uh, the intent was just to work with, um, stuff that was above the surface, i.e. not the ground itself. I did ask them to restore, uh, where they had brought their, in, uh, their equipment back to what was there before. Hopefully they've done that, I haven't had a chance to go back out there, correct.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't had the chance to go back out there and take a look at it myself, but I do have every intention to do so. Uh, I gave the property owner clear instruction on what they should do, i.e. uh, hire a soil scientist or wetland scientist to actually determine where wetlands are, if they are in fact present, because if they're not, then they're not doing anything uh, that's not in compliance, but if they are, we're gonna wanna confirm what areas of the property are wetlands and how that relates to what it is that they're looking to do. Um, hopefully they're in the middle of that process, um, when I would go out there, I would naturally ask them, you know, what have you guys done since I was out there and, uh, how do you think, or what your intentions are, uh, since we last met? Um, I know this does look pretty severe, um, but, uh, this is, this, this, I would hope this would be the worst that it would get, uh, uh, it could get, uh, as far as disturbance goes, um, yeah.
Um, would you say that they're clear cutting?
It, 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 it looks like that, but there are, there are some, there are some much la, there are some larger trees that are out there that they, uh, wanted to, uh, not touch. So it was, it was just the dead ones that they were looking.
Do we know what the purpose is for the lean?
Excellent question, um, the, uh, um, the property owner that I spoke to said that she was trying to, uh, improve the property, uh, out of, uh, respect for the wishes of her late husband.
Right, are they clearing exes and dens mostly?
That's, that was the explanation that they gave to me.
Okay. Um, the one thing I did like in Alex Roberts' report from the previous application we discussed was the idea of using, uh, bio-based, uh, fuels in the machines that you're operating a weapon, I think was required.
Um, I, I was more focused on just getting them to stop doing the work.
Yeah.
Never, never mind figuring out what the material, what the equipment was fueled by. If, if the commission wants to restrict what types of equipment are allowed to operate and where, you can certainly broach that discussion when you actually have someone before you with a formal application.
But if they're gonna continue working here, you told them, you get them to stop.
I, I, I told them you cannot continue to operate machines in this area where the, where the soil appears to be wetlands, period.
Great, and are they done?
Uh, to, but to my knowledge, the activity has not resumed since I told them to stop, so I would assume they have not done anything else.
Thanks for doing that.
You're welcome. Um, any further questions on that, okay. So let's go to sixteen Oakland Heights. Um.
Working, yeah.
For context, if, um.
This one? Yeah. Oh, that's a big veil one, those are more trees than I used.
In case you all don't know where this is, Oakland Heights is actually a lot closer to here than what you would think it would be. I'm going to bring it up on the screen right now. Oh, I've already got that up, well, how do you like that? Um. Sorry.
What's up?
Oh, jeez. There we go. All right, everybody can see my screen, right?
Yeah.
Good, so we are here, just the municipal center. Okay, we're in fact right where my cursor is. You go down Library Place, you go across the street, uh, down Depot Place towards Agway, take a right and you go past, uh, Henry Street. Or you go down Henry Street, actually, and right before you get to, uh, the property that is the bus yard for the Bethel, uh, school system, you take a right and this street right here is Oakland Heights. And this lot right here, it's operated as an industrial property and, uh, their uses range from, uh, contractors storing concrete forms uh, towards the front, toward, uh, to, uh, a gentleman that owns a, uh, a logging business, for lack of better words, uh, towards the back. Um, my prompt for coming back here on this property was, uh, flooding issues, uh, from Simpaw Brook. There was a property owner, uh, on the opposite side of the water course that uh, was concerned that what was going on here, especially towards, uh, the bank, uh, Simpaw Brook, uh, and, and thought that that was attributing to some of the flooding that was, uh, going on on her property. So I went out there and, and, uh, met with the property owner and investigated this area and, uh, my findings, I'll be, try to bring up the first photograph for you. Okay. Uh, that's not a good shot, where's a good shot that I can show you? Yeah, this is a good shot. Can everybody see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, uh, this is Simpaw Brook, here on the right-hand side of the screen, um, this view is looking towards the south, so way out in the distance would be, uh, the. uh the complex for Shepherd's Ink and all the other Butler buildings way out the end of Henry Street. And further on down uh would be uh um the Bethel Transit Station. Uh pass where uh this crosses underneath uh Route fifty-three, can measure north. Uh, but here in the foreground, there's a lot of uh disposed tree material. And off here to the left is stockpiled buildings. And in the background is a trailer that was uh being used to store uh equipment and other logging uh related items. I had asked the a property owner uh to have the tenant uh clear out all the material here. Relocate the trailer to be not so close to the water course and further downstream. Uh, there's a huge stockpile of filled tree sections and the like. Uh, I had asked them to relocate those to be not so close to uh the water's edge. So this is, so this is the uh part of the results for uh what you're seeing back here and some more recent shots that I will share with you, just because I was out at the property today. Uh, they've made some marked uh progress. And here we are. Excellent, okay. And let me share my screen. Can you guys see these? Nope, nope. That's not the right tab. It's not what I wanted to show. I'm sorry. No, I'm not raising my hand. Let's try. There we go. Second time's the charm. So this has all been taken out. All the, all the tree material in here, all the millings, those have been removed. I did advise the property owner to try to regrade and take out a little bit more of the material, especially here along the water's edge. Uh, they are going to be moving the trailer uh to the left with respect to the perspective of this shot, uh to be further away from the water course. This, this looks much better than what it was when I was out there. Uh, and like I was saying before, uh uh, this is already a lot better than what it used to be out there. Uh, you can actually see the, I mean, it's, it is I believe this is Frackmides, but at least it's green compared to
That's what was in the foreground of the photos the first time.
Japanese knotweed.
Knotweed, thank you.
This is not knotweed. I believe you me, uh knotweed, uh it's, it gets its uh first leaves out pretty quickly. Uh, considering how this is growing, uh with having its leaf structure go up.
If you go back to the other photo, I think that was what was in the foreground. Doesn't really matter, but
Kind of a good question. What's, to what end are you having to move things away from the wet, the well?
So, so the the thought process is uh the, the stuff that was stockpiled that close to the water course, they never got a permit to have it be there. So um my, my rationale was without restricting or greatly compromising the use of their property, um try to have some healthy balance for them to be able to use the property. And try to have some protection for the wetlands in the water course. Um, especially in flooding events. When uh you have either heavy rains or be rid of activity like they've been experiencing out here for the past few months. Um, the water level does rise. Granted, it hasn't gotten high enough where it's gotten onto this property yet. But you certainly wanna, you certainly wouldn't want to rule out the possibility for that, and you wouldn't want any materials that would be placed here to take away from the flood storage capacity uh that this property would otherwise have if the material weren't there. So um uh for, for what has been done thus far, um especially for the last shot that I showed you guys, just getting them to take the material out, to not have everything stockpiled here is a huge step to that end. And uh going forward, um I would hope uh and expect that they would, that they would give me a permit if, or submit a permit if they want to do anything close to this area, let alone to the extent that they had done before.
Yeah, as far as does it make sense to try to plant it with bioimmediates, plant species to help with the pollution?
I, I'm, I'm trying to take this as baby steps. So trying to get the area to be uh vegetated at all. Uh, let alone with, with species that would be best suited for this area is a huge first step. Um, especially considering that you know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be reasonable to the contractor who uh was uh wasn't, they, they, they're not being proactive, they're being reactive to me going out there and saying, hey, we need to fix this. If, if they do want to do any other work down in this area, we could certainly entertain them. Uh, putting in plants to uh be more conducive than the Frackmides or the knotweed. But I'm just, I'm just trying to work one step at a time.
What's their, what has been their mood and and behavior toward, toward processing toward you?
Uh, it's, it's been very cooperative. And and I'm, and I'm trying to keep it that way. I, I feel as though if, if I'm too overreactive to say, hey, you guys should come with a permit, you guys need to explain what you're doing and 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 go to the nth degree, then I would just get more pushback.
You may have receptive years, I know them. And they may be receptive toward their, toward caring for, caring for the environment. They're workers. They have their businesses, which is obviously taking priority. But I don't think they're, they're done to the needs of the welling and the environment either. I think you can potentially have opportunities to play and have a cooperative discourse. It's a very, very difficult site. It's very polluted. It's an old, old industrial site. It's been polluted for a long time.
I, I'm, I'm sure. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure it has been, a- and and I don't want to uh try to supersede any um legal nonconformity, nonconformities as far as use for this property. Um, by um saying they can't operate, you know, on areas where they have otherwise done before.
No, I'm just wondering how best, if there's anything that can be done on the property to in with the knowledge that we know now about how to protect the environment, because this is an old site. It's one of these grandfather
We start doing that, you start getting restrictive. I think Dave's doing a great job ballasting out. Everyone's being friendly, like, oh, we need to know, let's fix it, and in the future, they may come to us, and at that point, we could do something, but I think he's right on. I think he's spot on. He's handling it, you know. It's not being competitive, it's, you know, improving it, and it's protecting the wetlands.
What, what, what I would tell the app, what I would tell the property owner or their tenants for that matter is, hey, if you guys want to put plantings back here, or if you want to reseed this because you don't like the knotweed or uh, you know, the bamboo that's on the property next door, or the Frackmides, I can help you uh and I can give you resources on how to best remove that material and guide you through the process if you need to get approvals to do that. And what, and furthermore, what plants you should replace those with. Because I agree with you, the Frackmides can easily overrun this site, along with any of the other invasive that are established nearby.
Like, they may want to make it, it's, I don't know what they're scheduled to, but they may want to work on it and make it more protected for the
Sure, sure.
I guess that's can we encourage it? Like you're saying, let me chill, be supportive, whatever.
The, the two determining factors are cost and availability.
Because there's no storm. It's just a plain concrete, like, you know, it's just a dirt. And it sees a lot of traffic.
And 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 I would say, because, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to try to get into the weeds on how permeable loose asphalt or compacted asphalt millings are and whether or not that would warrant having a stormwater management system. But um, you know, the, the, the site doesn't have much in the way of structures on it apart, apart from this trailer, which I don't even know if they would want to call that a structure. And the outbuilding that houses their office way towards the road on this property.
I was imagining like maybe like a moat, like something sort of simple.
I don't think we can go in and start attacking them.
All of a sudden, you're costing a million dollars for something like this, and I think right now it's being protected. Yeah, once you start looking at it, though, you're opening up that key in a worm. You gotta get an engineer, you gotta get this, you gotta get that. And by the time you're done, you need stormwater for the whole property. That's a big piece of property there. And all of a sudden, guess what? You've got some real pissed off people.
And they're not asking to do improvements on the property. They didn't come to us with an application where we can dictate to them what we need to do in order to make sure that it's in compliance and that it's protecting the wetlands. They're using their property as they've been using their property, and Dave's asking for an adjustment on that because it's infringing too close to the wetlands. So for us to go in there and say, well, now that we're here and we see all these things, we want you to improve it in all of these ways because it'll be better for the environment. I'm not comfortable with that personally.
I just think they
Yeah, definitely not. I, I'm sorry, I've been listening to it all, and I just wanted to, to win that. It's like, be, be careful to poke the bear too much, you know? But at the same, at the same time, it's
I just thought the owner might want to do that at some point.
I, I, I would certainly, I would dispass that with them, and I certainly wouldn't discourage it, but I don't know.
We're about to enforce today or something that everybody's moving.
It'd be awesome if they took that route. I just don't think that's
If you want to ever let me know, and we'll look into it.
Okay.
Polluted site, so it's a troubled spot in Bethel, and it shouldn't be ignored forever. At some point, I think, the stormwater situation there, where I think, whatever it is that collects and holds the water separate from the, the runoff, the pollution water runoff, separate from the, it goes straight into the Simpaw Brook, would be a huge thing for the, just for the watershed. And I think they would agree.
Okay, um, last but not least for enforcement is One Pleasant Street. Uh, this came to our attention because the property owner was doing work on their property without permits for their structure. Uh, and lo and behold, as you guys will see on this on the screen shortly, they have a man-made pond on their property.
Is that a bad thing?
No, it's, it's not a The, the insights that I have for this property is that this was made by a previous owner sometime in the mid-seventies. Um, back before any kind of permit to do any kind of work like this was necessary. Uh, it, it, it appears to be fed by, uh seasonally fed by um runoff that comes from the catch basin system related to Pleasant Street. And then there's an outlet that goes uh in the direction towards uh Palos Kip Lumber and further out towards Bethel Reservoir Brook, way up towards grounds. Uh, but the focus for me going out there was all of the work that was done here on the right, where you can see all the sod and uh and uh matted, and matted areas with the hay and the construction which, and the construction equipment. I'm sorry?
Look at the grading that they, is that, that's
So, so I, I, I've um
That's getting out of there.
The, the, the property, the, I was informed that the, the hill that was here that, that we're zooming in on, that was always there. They just did some, some work to uh clear. And uh they're, I try, I think the ultimate intent is to try to re-landscape this area, just because I, I, I'm up here on the top, this level's out to grade, oddly enough. Um, but I had told them, if, if you're looking to do any work, um especially to shore up the bank of this pond with some of the rocks that you've taken out from other areas on this property, you need to get a permit. And you need to have a soil scientist come in and, and, and actually embellish what it is that you're looking to do. And describe how, you know, it doesn't adverse impacts. Granted, you know, even though it's a man-made resource, it's still a resource. Um, so I'm, I'm still working on them, uh still working with them on, on that. You know, the, the, the carrot for this being, uh they want to get a permit to uh finish construction on this. So
How big is that?
Uh, that's a good question. I think it's
It's less than two hundred square feet?
No, it's more than two hundred square feet.
Was the slab on grade?
Uh, there is no slab. I believe it's on piers.
Is it a shed?
It's a shed.
It's a big shed.
It's a very big shed.
That's why it says two hundred, two hundred, you don't need a permit.
Right, so but
My property.
Guys, they will require a building.
Is it, does it, yeah, does it serve with electricity and?
I don't know what their ultimate intent would be. I- if they do want to service it with electricity, they would have to apply to the correct building codes.
It's right next to Palos Kip.
Palos Kip's number, that's correct. It's a, this is a very interesting parcel. So, so um I'll bring this up for you guys.
I won't be able to see it on the
This parcel is, where are we here? Yes, there we are. Okay. Nope. Can everybody see this? So over here's the hub shopping center.
I see.
Over here, this is uh the Sycamore Plaza. This is the traffic light. You take a right. And you take a, you're now you're at the traffic light for Thibodeau Avenue. You take a left. And you would take another left onto Pleasant Street, or no, Lindbergh Street. And then you take an immediate left or right onto Grandview Terrace. There's a very windy driveway that um in addition to servicing uh this lot here, it also services the lot that I went out to look at. It, it is a very uh quirky shaped lot. And then the parcel to the west, that's Palos Kip's number. And you guys can see, there, there used to be a shed here in the back. I don't know if that ever got permits, but this is the man-made ponds. And this is the area where they had done all that work with the um madding and all that. Any questions?
Let's update all of them, yeah.
The last thing I would mention, and I, as I mentioned in the last meeting, for Jennifer's Way, um I still haven't scheduled a zoning compliance certificate inspection. If there's any changes to the plan, uh any changes that were made that are in contrast to the plan, I would have them come back before the board as appropriate to make sure that they're in compliance with the rights and they haven't done anything beyond what you had approved them to do. Uh, and then apart from that, we have an aquatic pesticide permit from deep. And that's it.
Sorry, David, I'm gonna talk about uh Cynthia.
Yes, thank you. So, Northwest Conservation District, uh Cynthia Benowitz. She reached out to me to ask, uh let me bring up her email. So I want to make sure I get this correct. Oh, she is putting together ideas for training programs for wetlands commissions. And uh I thought it would be best for uh me to get input right from you guys on what that might entail and what you would have interest on her presenting to you. The one thing that she would be averse to talking about is anything that has to do with legal stuff.
That is a loaded question.
I think introductory to, for women new commission members, what wetlands exactly are, what entails or what.
Great question. She's already done that.
Was that a question or just statement?
And, and uh that resource And, and, uh, that resource does.
I think you've given it to us.
It is, it's still on YouTube. I checked, uh, not too long ago. Uh, so she still has that.
My brain is not functioning yet.
Yeah, we have to think on this, like, say, lighting effects on wetlands. I want her to talk about and know about.
Sure.
For training, we're talking about training wetlands commissioners to understand the incidence of building around wetlands, right?
Uh, well, just, i- 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 it could be, uh, it could be native plants. It could be knowing how to read maps. It could be watersheds. It could be. Uh, distinguishing wetlands' resources. A- a- anything and everything under, you know, what's pertinent to regulated activities.
I would say the number one thing, everybody on this commission, me personally. Uh, the ability to properly and adequately read maps would be at the top of the list. Because I think that's something that, in, in planning zoning too, that's, that's a function that. Us until we, I, I'll speak for myself. Until I came in this room, I haven't had a lot of experience with, and that took a little bit of getting used to. And I think that's something very good. And also dumbing down verbiage. Um, for people that are not yet accustomed to it. Because the first three months sitting in the chair, I was. Working towards understanding what we were speaking about as opposed to understanding the issues at hand.
I, um, would have her talk about like the upland review area. And how important that is for the wet. So how, what is a sufficient upland reviewer to have or, and also repairing buffers like. But, buffers, what, what, what sort of a buffer does a wetland need to actually function and stay protected? Sure. Uh. And how that plays to our upland here.
Sure. So, um, I wouldn't want you to have to, uh. Try to formulate a response right now. But over the next week, I would ask that you guys, uh, give me your thoughts so that I can run them by Cynthia and let her know what you'd like. And, uh, try to schedule that for you guys, too.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Done. All right, then I will open up the floor to public comments. Seeing no one here. Amanda, anybody on Cyberland?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to our last item on the agenda, which is commission comments in the Wetlands Regulations Review and Discuss. Did anyone have any that they wished to? Open. I just fashioned up tonight.
Nothing additional from me.
Um. Nothing right now, except the one thing, there was the weapon, I know it's the checklist for our applications.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Hmm.
It says that we can request anything in a timely manner. But I was just wondering if we, if we should put the. If we have to put the, the things on the checklist for them to like know. Like, I'm thinking of, of, you know, like, like something showing with the lighting, so.
Hmm.
Um. So. Do we have to put that explicitly in our checklist, or is it just something that, what I think our regulations tell us we can do is just ask for any pertinent information that we think that. We would need to evaluate for that safety of the wetlands.
Yeah, I.
But I've, I've received like pushback sometimes from, from the developers and engineers for timing. The timing has been a concern over the. Just different amount of things back to the applications over this last few, four years that I've been on the board, and it's never been kind of. Always a straightforward, like, yep, okay, we got that for you.
Right, so, so.
Got that coming for it.
So, so the two comments that I would give is, first, yes, you're absolutely, you're going to want to be upfront with. As upfront as you can be with your requests. So if you're going to request a photometric plan. You're going to want to do that as early as you can in the process, ideally when you accept the application. Uh, which leads me into my second comment. I- 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 it's, it's, it's a very site-specific request.
Yeah.
So if you're working with a commercial building. Where you know there's going to be a lot of exterior lights off the building itself, or into a rather extensive parking lot that happens to be close to a wetland, yeah. You absolutely have the right to request a photometric plan. Whereas, on the other hand, if you have, uh, a plan for a single-family dwelling. Where the only regulated, regulated activity is the driveway or septic system, if that, it may be. Uh, you, you may get more pushback for an applicant to submit a photometric plan, just because the house isn't in the regulated area itself. And, and you have to have some, you'd have to have some proof or some evidence that. Having the photometric plan, you know, and, and lighting is an element that's under your purview. First, I mean, that's outside of the regulated area. Uh.
Because light, you know, light goes wherever it's unrepeated.
Right, right. That, that, that's correct, but I.
It goes right into my upland review area and into our levels.
But I, I think. Pushback that you get is on the intensity for the foot candles, the movements. Or whatever other light-related term, and, and how bright the light is and whether or not it's, you know. Uh, it's foot candles or whatever other lighting-related term, we actually have an impact. Yeah, like, like you may.
Question for Cynthia.
Sure, sure. That could definitely be a question for Cynthia.
So.
I know it's not a big commercial or industrial building with thousands of lights, but, you know, lots of, a thousand houses with the light.
Yeah, definitely worth discussing with Cynthia.
Any other regulations we wanted to talk about tonight? All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda, so I want to entertain. At eight forty-nine.
Nope.
You're good, alright.
Nope, nothing else. It's, uh, just what I commented on earlier. Nothing additional to that.
Entertaining motion to adjourn at eight fifty PM on May nineteenth.
All second.
A motion to adjourn it.
Okay.
I, I make that motion. I would like to make that motion.
Nico, make the motion, would you like to second?
Second.
Any discussion? And then I'll call it out. Kevin.
Hi.
Nico.
Hi, I'm.
Scott.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. We are adjourned at eight fifty PM. Thank you so much, Amanda.
Yeah, thanks.